The House will come to order. Without objection, we will revert to the calendar for the day. The first bill on the calendar for the day is House File 1. The clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 1, Number 1 on the calendar for the day, an act relating to public safety.
I recognize the author of the bill, the member from Ramsey, Representative Mariani, to explain the bill. Or we can go to your First Amendment. Members, we're holding for just a minute to locate the author of the bill to present the DE 1 amendment. Apparently, we are having technical difficulties. The chair is trying to join the call. He's on. Representative Mariani.
Madam Speaker, it's a pleasure to finally join everyone. It took me a while, my apologies.
If you would like, we will report the amendment, the A 200819 Delete All Amendment. The clerk will report the amendment.
Mariani moves to amend. House File Number 1 is follows. The amendment is coded A 20-0819.
Representative Mariani to the amendment.
Madam Speaker, this amendment reflects the agreement arrived at between the House and the Senate on House File 1, the Minnesota Police Accountability Act. And I don't know whether I should just walk through the amendment at this point. I'll take your guidance.
I think you could hit the bullet pointed list, Representative Mariani.
Madam Speaker and members, I will do that. I had a much more eloquent sharing for everyone, but given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to skip that at this point. Madam Speaker and members, we passed a pretty big bill. And so there was plenty of work for us to chew on with the Senate. But we've come to agreement in several areas. One is to be able to improve our stress and trauma resources for our emergency service providers. There is also an agreement to have a BCA independent investigatory unit that would investigate officer-involved deaths. There is also a police residency reform that authorizes incentives for residencies by locals for their peace officers. There is a prohibition of the use of chokeholds and other restraints methods that is enforced within our criminal code. There is a mandatory reporting to the BCA for use of force incidents. This follows the parameters of the FBI in their request for that information. So it's good to have that collection of information centralized at the BCA. There are two public members that are added. So these are general public members that are added to the post board, which is our state licensing board for peace officers. There's also an expansion on that board of the complaint investigation committee that makes it possible for there to be four, rather five, members, but includes a general public member. And so for the first time, we're requiring inclusion of a general public member on that committee, which reviews licensure issues, including disciplinary actions. There's a prohibition and a definition of warrior-style training, no reimbursements to law enforcement officers or to entities, and no credits extended for that type of training. There's the creation of a Community Relations Advisory Council inside the post board. This is a critically important step that ensures that there is a strong, regular community presence in the post board itself, working alongside law enforcement officers in order to provide advice on interventions as well as policy for enhancing community relations through the licensing board. There is a requirement for law enforcement chiefs to submit data to the post board to create a contributor to a centralized database that then is used by that council as well as by the board to inform their decisions in terms of intervening with officers who are likely to violate policies inherent in the licensing structure of the board. Members will remember that the particular officer being charged with the killing of George Floyd was in possession of at least 18, 19 major complaints. And so the idea here, members, is to be able to have a system in place that can identify early and can intervene at whatever level early. There's a requirement from the post board to update its model use of force policy to reflect statutory changes. There's authority for the board to ensure compliance by all law enforcement entities in adopting use of force models consistent with the post board. There's a crisis intervention and mental illness crisis training enhancements and requirements. The board's directed also to evaluate the effectiveness of those trainings. We've been investing in those training dollars for a number of years with no expectation and no direction of the Department of Legislature for the valuation of the investment of the taxpayers' dollars in those trainings. There are autism training requirements. There is a statutory duty for officers to intercede and to also report excessive use of force in the event that they're involved in an incident where there is a violation of law that could lead to wrongful death of citizens. There is arbitration reform in the bill, which eliminates the incentives that are currently within the systems that make it very difficult for either the complainant or the defendant, so in this case, that would be police officer him or herself, to be able to ensure that the decisions are mediated in a way consistent with the facts of the matter. There is an extension of the sunset for the training dollars, but only for two years. And again, based on an evaluation effort of those training dollars, as well as a certification by the post board that certain training be done by qualified individuals and entities in regards to de-escalation efforts, policing in issues of mental illness, and then also training in cultural diversity and implicit bias. Then there are several appropriations that then match up with the policy directions. Madam Speaker, and there are amendments to some of these as well in the sense. So that's a very quick wrap-up of the agreement that we've reached over a course of eight very long days, but quite frankly, weeks prior to that, following the last special session. Members, Madam Speaker, stand ready for questions and/or amendments at this point.
There's an amendment to the amendment. The clerk will report the amendment.
Mohler moves to amend the Mariani amendment to House File Number 1 is follows. The amendment to the amendment is coded A 16.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Mohler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This amendment has to do with Section 5 of Chair Mariani's amendment, the Independent Use of Force Investigations Unit. Under that provision of the bill, the BCA is tasked with investigating officer-involved deaths, but also investigating all criminal sexual conduct cases involving peace officers. And so what this does is just make sure that the data involving officer-involved death investigations is shared according to Chapter 13, but that we're not inadvertently here sharing information regarding criminal sexual conduct investigations. And for that reason, Madam Chair and members, I hope you'll vote yes on this amendment to the amendment.
Any questions for Representative Mohler on the amendment to the amendment? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The amendment to the amendment is adopted. There's another amendment to the amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Kunish Padin moves to amend the Mariani amendment to House File Number 1. The amendment to the amendment is coded A 12.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Kunish Padin, to your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This amendment, A 12, allows a six-month extension to the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Task Force. It is allowing the task force to tie up the loose threads after its preliminary report to the legislature in December. So in June 2021, the task force will share an additional report to the chairs and ranking minority members of the legislative committee and divisions with jurisdiction over public safety, human services, state government on the task force. A report will be submitted to the legislative committees by December 15 of 2020. And then this final report will be submitted by June 30 of 2022. Members, I would appreciate a green vote.
The member from Isanti, Representative Johnson.
Madam Speaker and members, please support this amendment. Something that needs to be done. When I was, a few years ago, we had this in a bill that was unfortunately vetoed by the governor. And we would have had that report already if that had not happened. This is very important. We need to get this done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There's an amendment to the amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Mariani moves to amend his amendment to House File Number 1. The amendment to the amendment is coded A 15.
Representative Mariani to your amendment to the amendment.
Madam Speaker and members, this provides a funding structure for the new database that's created within this agreement. It adds appropriations that have been requested by the administration as they've identified how to make that data system real, as well as to provide the support for the mental illness crisis training that's called for in this bill. And then finally, to support the, to be able to have staffing support for the Community Relations Advisory Council. I would encourage your support.
The member from Isanti, Representative Johnson.
Madam Speaker, would Representative Mariani yield for a question?
He will yield. Representative Johnson.
Representative Mariani. Going through this bill, I'm wondering, if you know what the reason was, this information or this allocation of funding was not included in the bill during the draft.
Representative Mariani.
Madam Speaker and Representative Johnson, obviously, we don't know what some of the costs are going to be unless we get to a point of agreement in terms of the scope, the type of work that needs to be done. We now know what that is. And so we've got a good analysis from the executive branch about what those costs would be.
Representative Johnson.
Madam Speaker, Representative Mariani, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of the amendment in front of me to really look at it and analyze it quick. I'm going to get one here real quickly. On this commission that, or council that's being put together on this bill, there's $23,000 for fiscal 23, and then another $96,000 for the board for allocated costs. And then there's more funds for the training. On the training part of it, is that on top of the $6 million that we're allocating to law enforcement agencies for training already? Or is that just going to the post board to put together the training in crisis intervention, which we already have that training programs in place?
Representative Mariani.
Madam Speaker, Representative Johnson, there were major changes to the mental illness crisis training. There was actually very little of any disagreement between the Senate and the House. We have pretty identical language in terms of what we wanted to see relative to the mental illness crisis training. The money then identified here is what the post and the executive board or executive branch is telling us it would cost in order to do those enhancements to mental illness crisis training.
Representative Johnson.
Madam Speaker, Representative Mariani, thank you for a little bit of that explanation. But I'm thinking back to my career in law enforcement back in the mid-'80s. I believe it was 1987. Law enforcement was screaming for mental health training back then. In fact, we, my department, along with all the departments in the county I worked, got together and talked to the staff at the Cambridge State Hospital. We got them to do the training. To learn from them what techniques work to control some of these people when they're out of control. Because at that time, when they were out of control, who did they call? They called law enforcement. And they still call law enforcement when they're out of control. But I remember going through all the techniques that they talked about, which is crisis intervention. We were doing it back then. When we were going through it, they got through all these different things we can do, we asked them a question, a very simple question. What happens when these techniques don't work? And the instructor, and I psychologists stated, well, when they don't work, we call law enforcement. And then they realized who they were talking to. They were talking to law enforcement, who were there to get the training, how to deal with these people when they're out of control. And when those techniques don't work. Members, law enforcement has been asking for help for this for decades. We've been doing a lot of training in it ever since then. We've been doing some good training. I don't know how many hours of training in de-escalation, dealing with those with mental health issues, dealing with those, even with autism. In fact, I know a number of people that have that, a number of children. I know a number of adults that have it and have had to deal with in my career in law enforcement. We always like more training. We have the training out there. This is a duplication of funding that we already have. I have some reservations about adding more money to this instead of giving it to the departments so their men and women of law enforcement can get the training they need. So, like I say, I have concerns about this amendment with the funding because I think it's going to the wrong places, because we have the programs already set up now that, and I don't see how it's going to cost $140,000 or $145,000 to redo the training we already have.
Any further discussion to the Mariani amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Moran moves to amend the Mariani amendment to House File Number 1 is amended. And the amendment to the amendment is coded A 14.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Moran.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. For this amendment, just the legislative intent and the criteria for authorizing use of deadly force. Both sections are effective March 1, 2020, in response to requests from law enforcement agencies to give them time to train on these changes. We have confirmed support from the Minnesota Police and Peace Officer Association, from the Minnesota Sheriff's Association, and from the Minnesota Chief of Police Association. Members, I ask for your support on the A 14 amendment.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. The motion, all those opposed, say no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. There's an amendment to the amendment. The clerk will report the amendment.
Nash moves to amend the Mariani amendment to House File Number 1. The amendment to the amendment is coded A 18.
The member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, this is an amendment that you have seen before. Representative Gomez brought a version of it when I was at a memorial service and was unable to join you there on the floor. But it is essentially this, an opportunity for the state of Minnesota to get answers relative to the civil unrest that happened as a result of the murder of George Floyd. And what we are seeking to get here is an impartial, dispassionate commission that will be constituted by the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. They will have subpoena power, and they will be able to find out the chronology of what happened, when it happened, decisions that were made by the various entities that were involved. And I think, members, this is going to give us something that all Minnesotans are looking for, which is the answer to the question of what happened over those nights? And who made the decisions? And what happened relative to those decisions being made? And the lead-up to them? You know, when this was on the floor previously, it was, I believe, a unanimous vote. Everybody was in favor of it. I believe this is something that is extremely needed. And, Madam Speaker, I would ask for a roll call.
Representative Nash requests a roll call. Are there 15 hands? Members, to get to 15, hold on. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will take the roll on the amendment. I'm sorry, Representative Mariani, it's an amendment to your amendment. Do you have? It's very difficult when there aren't members in the chamber for you to let me know you would like to speak. Representative Mariani.
Madam Chair, and I was puzzled how to do that, actually. Thank you. You know, Representative Nash, without speaking to the merits of your amendment, I think what concerns me right now is that we have agreement with the Senate on the language that's before us. It took us eight long days of 12, 14, 15-hour days, not to mention, you know, all the time in between the two special sessions on an incredibly important issue that all Minnesotans really want us to act on. I would hate for us to disrupt that, put that in danger by adding something that the other body hasn't seen yet and, as far as I know, hasn't spoken on this issue. And so while I have the same interest and curiosity that you have, I don't think this is the time and the place to do that, certainly not with what's at stake before us at this late hour. And so I would urge you to withdraw your amendment. I think your point is well taken. We're going to continue to have this conversation, no doubt. But if you don't withdraw your amendment, I hope you do, I would encourage members to vote no, not because of the merits, but to make sure that we do not put in jeopardy this hard, hard negotiating agreement between the House and the Senate.
Representative Nash.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, Chairman Mariani, I will tell you that certain senators have indeed seen this language. Senator Dietzick has seen this language. Senator Benson has seen this language. And both are receptive to what we're trying to get done here. I think, you know, I'm not 100% sure that the amendments that were just added on were agreed to. I don't know that to be a fact, but I think... I don't know that to be a fact, but I think, Madam Speaker, this is an important amendment that I think, in the time between now and, let's say, when we come back, we can actually begin standing this up, and we can begin answering questions as to what is it that Minnesotans want the answer to, which is what happened? You know, I was up in northern Minnesota in between sessions, and I was fishing, and a person stopped me when they recognized me from an interview I had done somewhere, and they said, you know, what's happening, and what are we going to find out relative to the civil unrest in Minneapolis and St. Paul? And they want to know. This is an important issue, it's an important effort, and I believe that it is going to be seen by the Senate as something that is logical and needed. So I would, I would choose not to withdraw.
Any further discussion? Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Appreciate the conversation on this amendment. We were just kind of delaying here just to get word back from the Senate. They have indicated they will take this amendment. This is something that we have supported in the past. I think it went on the last time here in the House on a voice vote and was basically unanimously supported, so the Senate will take it if we put it on the bill. I'd yield to Representative Winkler to see if that changes their mind on whether they would accept it or not.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, Representative Douth, this provision was already in the Promise Act, which actually provided help to the businesses, nonprofits, and individuals harmed by the civil unrest, and to attach it to this bill and not do anything for those people who were harmed is irresponsible, and I ask for a no vote.
Any further discussion? Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'd request a yes vote.
The clerk will take the roll on the amendment to the amendment.
Acem.
Acem, no.
Acem, no. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, no.
Bonner, no. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, no. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, no.
Bernardi, no. Bierman.
Bierman, no.
Bierman, no. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, no.
Brand, no. Cantrell.
Cantrell, no.
Cantrell, no. Carlson A.
Carlson A, no.
Carlson A, no. Carlson L.
Carlson L, no.
Carlson L.
Carlson L, no.
Carlson L, no. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no. Claflin.
Claflin, no.
Claflin, no. Considine.
Considine, no.
Considine, no. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Douth. Douth, aye. Davids. Davids, aye. Daphne.
Daphne, no.
Daphne, no. Dean.
Dean, no.
Dean, no. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski.
Druskowski, aye.
Druskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, yes.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, no.
Edelson, no. Elkins.
Elkins, no.
Elkins, no. Erickson. Excused. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen.
Franzen, yes.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, no.
Freiberg, no. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, no.
Gomez, no. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, no. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, no.
Hanson, no. Hassan.
Hassan, no.
Hassan, no. Hausmann.
Hausmann, no.
Hausmann, no. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, no.
Herr, no. Hurtas. Excused.
Hurtas, aye.
Hurtas.
Hurtas, aye.
Hurtas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, no.
Hornstein, no. Howard.
Howard, no.
Howard, no. Hewitt.
Hewitt, no.
Hewitt, no. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, no.
Jordan, no. Jurgens. Jurgens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, no.
Cleavorn, no. Cagle.
Cagle, no.
Cagle, no. Katisa Waton.
Katisa Waton, no.
Katisa Waton, no. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Cresha.
Cresha, aye.
Cresha, aye. Kunis Paudine.
Kunis Paudine, no.
Kunis Paudine, no. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee. Lee, no. Lesch.
Lesch, no.
Lesch, no. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, no.
Lean, no. Lilly.
Lilly, no.
Lilly, no. Lippert.
Lippert, no.
Lippert, no. Listegard.
Listegard, yes.
Listegard, aye. Long. Long, no. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, no.
Mahoney, no. Mann.
Mann, no.
Mann, no. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, no.
Moeller, no. Moran.
Moran, no.
Moran, no. Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison, no. Munson. Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, no.
Murphy, no. Nash.
Nash, aye.
Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, no.
Nelson M, no. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor. Nor, no. Nornus.
Nornus, aye.
Nornus, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson. Olson, no. O'Neal.
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, no.
Palowski, no. Purcell.
Purcell, no.
Purcell, no. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Poppy.
Poppy, no.
Poppy, no. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, no.
Pryor, no. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson, no. Robins. Robins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, no.
Sandell, no. Sandstead.
Sandstead, no.
Sandstead, no. Sauk.
Sauk, no.
Sauk, no. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, no.
Schultz, no. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, no.
Stevenson, no. Sundine.
Sundine, no.
Sundine, no. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, no.
Tabkey, no. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdol. Erdol, aye. Vang.
Vang, no.
Vang, no. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, no.
Wagenius, no. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, no.
Wazlowick, no. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, no. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Zhang Jie. Zhang Jie.
Zhang Jie, no.
Zhang Jie, no. Zhang T.
Zhang T, no.
Zhang T, no. Yuwakim.
Yuwakim, no.
Yuwakim, no. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, no. Mecklen.
There being 61 ayes and 71 nays, the motion does not prevail, the amendment is not adopted. There's another amendment to the amendment at the desk, the clerk will report the amendment.
Herr moves to amend the Mariani amendment to House File Number One as follows, the amendment to amendment is coded A-20-0822.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, this amendment adjusts, we're adding language to allow the commissioner when appointing arbitraries to take into account the law enforcement's experience, and so we just wanted to make sure that we were accommodating, working with our partners and stakeholders who will be impacted by this, and so it just puts the, the amendment just clarifies language for us of what the commissioner will be looking at.
Any discussion to the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails, the amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments to the amendment at the desk, unless somebody's handing me one. So we are on the amendment as amended. Any discussion to the amendment as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails, the amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk, the clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number One, as amended.
Third reading, as amended. Any discussion to the bill? Seeing none, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. Oh, the member from Ice Ante, Representative Johnson.
Madam Chair, members, we've come a long ways on this bill from what we had, what was it, a month ago? It's gotten a lot better. A lot of things are no longer in here that probably should never have been in the bill to begin with. But I do have some, still a couple of concerns on this. One, I'm, one concern I have is in the Police Act, the Community Relations Advisory Council. I'm looking at the members on this list. It's the Superintendent of BCA, or his designee, Executive Director of the Post Board, Director of the Minneapolis, or Minnesota Peace and Peace Officers Association, Sheriff's Association, the Chiefs of Police Association, four members from community-specific boards, one member from NAMI, and one member from the Violence Free Minnesota, and four members appointed by the Legislature. Now, I believe probably, probably one member of this entire board will be from greater There is no representation for greater Minnesota in this, on this board. Everybody else listed on here is generally from the metro. Now, law enforcement, over the years, especially those in greater Minnesota, have fought with Post Board on the training issues, because all the training was geared to Minneapolis and St. Paul. We'd go for our hours to get our credits, and all the training was absolutely worthless because it had nothing to do with greater Minnesota. I have a feeling that this board's going to be the same way, and they're going to make recommendations and things for the Police Department in Roseau, Minnesota, or the Police Department in Badet, or that one-man department in Solway Township in St. Louis They're going to have to do things the metro way, which doesn't work in greater Minnesota. It doesn't work at all. I also have issues with the added members on the Post Board itself. They're adding four more, four more members on the Post, or two more members on the Post Board that are of general public, but it doesn't require that half of them have to be from greater Minnesota. They could all be from the metro area. Also, I have a little bit of concern, I know, with the funding, I know law enforcement wants the extension of the $6 million per year for training, and I agree, they need the funding. But I recently received some information, I have, unfortunately, have not been able to verify yet, that a department received 800, over $800,000, and they only could account for $150,000 that went for, went for actual training. So, I think we need to, before we, we should really look at, before we extend in any more I think we need to before we, we should really look at before we extend any more of this money that is being used where it's supposed to go. I also was, received information this morning that in that same department, they have some officers that are not going, not going to get their license renewed because they were not given the opportunity to get the 48 hours of credit to renew their license. So they're scrambling. So, as I say, I have concerns about this bill, I'm going to vote for it, but it's issues that we need to look at in the future, thank you.
Is there any further discussion to the bill? Representative Mariani or Representative Moran, did you want a closing or no?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'll be very, very brief. Members, this is not the bill that I wanted for us to have today. We had a much more robust bill that we passed off here a few weeks ago. But I can say this with full confidence, if this is a good bill before you, it creates a modern accountability framework of laws that will help to end the type of police brutality that killed George Floyd in May of this year. That killing touched off a massive outrage of Minnesotans from all communities, black, white, brown, urban, suburban, rural, that quickly touched the hearts and minds of thousands of Americans across the country, and they took to the streets to exercise their First Amendment rights to also express their outrage and their desire for change. And what they're asking for is actually pretty basic, and that's what this bill asks of our, of our policing and of our citizenry in the state of Minnesota. And that is that we should be held accountable. Everyone should be held accountable, our police should certainly be held accountable. And the way to do that is to create processes in which Minnesotans engage with one another powerfully, honestly, and objectively centered on the sanctity of life, centered on human rights, centered on the dignity of life. Now, those are the three things that this bill asks us to do. To some members, I encourage you to rise up to what Minnesotans are asking us to do, and let's begin that process of healing Minnesota and observing the human rights and the human dignity that every Minnesotan possesses and should be honored by all of our public officials.
Representative Moran.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. You know, members, I know that many in law enforcement think that we can, we could, or we should improve things under our current frameworks, perhaps with more training, or perhaps that current accountability measures are strong enough. But I tell you that the pain, the frustration, the trauma and the righteous anger our communities have experienced over and over again highlights that the status quo simply isn't working. So it's why we're here this evening. Our black and brown Minnesotans deserve justice and accountability, and creating a police accountability law is just one step towards realizing the importance of life in every police encounter with a member of the community. What we have brought for is just the beginning, just the beginning, and of course, you know, some of us believe that we can always be more. But members, this is a good bill. And again, it is a, it is a beginning, it's not an end, and I do, I want to ask for your support. Thank you.
No further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill.
Acem.
Acem aye.
Acem aye, Albright. Albright aye, Anderson.
Anderson no.
Anderson no, Backer.
Backer no.
Backer no, Bonner.
Bonner aye.
Bonner aye, Barr.
Barr aye.
Barr aye, Baker.
Baker aye.
Baker aye, Becker Finn. Becker Finn aye, Bennett.
Bennett aye.
Bennett aye, Bernardi.
Bernardi aye.
Bernardi aye, Bierman.
Bierman aye.
Bierman aye, Bo.
Bo aye.
Bo aye, Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand aye, Cantrell.
Cantrell aye.
Cantrell aye, Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye, Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye, Christensen.
Christensen aye.
Christensen aye, Claflin.
Claflin aye.
Claflin aye, Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine aye, Daniels.
Daniels no.
Daniels no, Doubt. Doubt no, Davids. Davids no, Dafne.
Dafne aye.
Dafne aye, Dean.
Dean aye.
Dean aye, Damath. Damath aye, Detmer.
Detmer no.
Detmer no, Dreskowski.
Dreskowski no.
Dreskowski no, Eklund.
Eklund aye.
Eklund aye, Edelson.
Edelson aye.
Edelson aye, Elkins.
Elkins aye.
Elkins aye, Erickson. Excused. Fabian.
Fabian no.
Fabian no, Fisher.
Fisher aye.
Fisher aye, Franzen.
Franzen, no.
Franzen no, Freiberg.
Freiberg aye.
Freiberg aye, Garofalo. Garofalo aye, Gomez.
Gomez aye.
Gomez aye, Green.
Green no.
Green no, Grassel.
Grassel, no.
Grassel, no, Grunhagen.
Grunhagen no.
Grunhagen no, Gunther.
Gunther no.
Gunther no, Haley. Haley.
Haley aye.
Haley aye, Halverson. Halverson aye, Hamilton.
Hamilton aye.
Hamilton aye, Hanson.
Hanson aye.
Hanson aye, Hassan.
Hassan yes.
Hassan aye, Hausmann.
Hausmann aye.
Hausmann aye, Heinrich.
Heinrich no.
Heinrich no, Heinzmann.
Heinzmann no.
Heinzmann no, Herr.
Herr aye.
Herr aye, Hertas. Hertas. Hornstein.
Hornstein aye.
Hornstein aye, Howard.
Howard aye.
Howard aye, Hewitt.
Hewitt aye.
Hewitt aye, Johnson. Johnson aye, Jordan.
Jordan aye.
Jordan aye, Juergens. Juergens aye, Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel aye, Cleavorn.
Cleavorn aye.
Cleavorn aye, Cagle.
Cagle aye.
Cagle aye, Katisa Whittoon.
Katisa Whittoon aye.
Katisa Whittoon aye, Koznick.
Koznick aye.
Koznick aye, Kresha.
Kresha aye.
Kresha aye, Kunish Podeen.
Howard.
Kunish Podeen, aye.
Kunish Podeen aye, Layman.
Layman, no.
Layman no, Lee. Lee aye, Lesch.
Lesch aye.
Lesch aye, Liebling.
Liebling aye.
Liebling aye, Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean aye, Lilly.
Lilly aye.
Lilly aye, Lippert.
Lippert aye.
Lippert aye, Listlegard.
Listlegard aye.
Listlegard aye, Long. Long aye, Lucero.
Lucero no.
Lucero no, Luick.
Luick no.
Luick no, Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney aye, Mann.
Mann aye.
Mann aye, Mariani.
Mariani aye.
Mariani aye, Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart aye, Mason.
Mason aye.
Mason aye, McDonald.
McDonald, no.
McDonald no, Mecklen. Mecklen. Miller.
Miller aye.
Miller aye, Moller.
Moller aye.
Moller aye, Moran.
Moran aye.
Moran aye, Morrison.
Morrison aye.
Morrison aye, Munson. Munson, no, Murphy.
Murphy aye.
Murphy aye, Nash.
Nash, no.
Nash, no, Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye, Nelson N.
Nelson N, no.
Nelson N, no, New. New no, Noor. Noor aye, Nornis.
Nornis, no.
Nornis no, Navatni. Navatni.
Navat, Navatni aye.
Navatni aye, O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll aye.
O'Driscoll aye, Olson. Olson aye, O'Neal.
O'Neal aye.
O'Neal aye, Palowski.
Palowski aye.
Palowski aye, Purcell.
Purcell aye.
Purcell aye, Petersburg.
Petersburg aye.
Petersburg aye, Pearson.
Pearson aye.
Pearson aye, Pinto.
Pinto aye.
Pinto aye, Poppy.
Poppy aye.
Poppy aye, Poston.
Poston aye.
Poston aye, Pryor.
Pryor aye.
Pryor aye, Quam.
Quam aye.
Quam aye, Richardson.
Richardson aye.
Richardson aye, Robbins. Robbins aye, Runbeck.
Runbeck, no.
Runbeck, no, Sandell.
Sandell aye.
Sandell aye, Sandstead.
Sandstead aye.
Sandstead aye, Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk aye, Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher aye, Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz aye, Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye, Stevenson.
Stevenson aye.
Stevenson aye, Sundine.
Sundine, no.
Sundine, no, Swazinski.
Swazinski aye.
Swazinski aye, Tabkey.
Tabkey aye.
Tabkey aye, Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice aye, Torkelson.
Torkelson, no.
Torkelson no, Erdol. Erdol aye, Vang.
Vang aye.
Vang aye, Vogel.
Vogel, no.
Vogel no, Weginias.
Weginias aye.
Weginias aye, Wazlawick.
Wazlawick aye.
Wazlawick aye, West.
West aye.
West aye, Winkler. Winkler aye, Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot aye, Zhang Jie.
Zhang Jie aye.
Zhang Jie aye, Zhang Ti.
Zhang Ti aye.
Zhang Ti aye, Yuakim.
Yuakim aye.
Yuakim aye, Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Hertas. Hertas. Mecklen. Mecklen.
Clerk will close the roll. Representative Barr would like to be recalled to change his vote.
Barr.
Barr changes from aye to nay.
Barr changes from aye to nay.
There being 102 ayes and 29 nays, the bill is passed as amended and its title agreed to. The member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, tonight we passed significant police accountability legislation eight weeks after George Floyd's murder. It's too late to save George and those who died before him, but it may save lives in the future. This has been a step towards real equality under law, and it's been bipartisan. So Madam Speaker, I hope that we may have an opportunity to continue that bipartisan work on a bonding bill, and I move that the House be allowed to meet past midnight.
Representative Winkler moves that the House be allowed to meet past midnight. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The next bill on the calendar for the day is House File Three. The clerk will report the bill.
House File Number Three, number two on the calendar for the day, an act relating to public finance, the First Engrossment.
The member from St. Louis, Representative Murphy, to your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I moved adoption of House File A-31 amendment that has brought, been brought to me and Ms. Nash since the bill was posted and passed through ways and means.
There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report. The amendment.
Murphy moves to amend House File Number Three. The First Engrossment is follows, and the amendment is coded A-31.
Sorry, Representative Murphy, I thought you wanted to get the amendment before the body. Representative Murphy.
You were right. And I don't want to talk a lot about it, it's things, it's mostly technical and changes, financial changes, and other issues that were brought to our attention that, by someone that wanted them in there. So they're part of the office amendment.
Any discussion to the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails, the amendment is adopted. There's another amendment at the desk. Representative Doubt has, Davids has an amendment. The clerk will report the amendment.
Davids moves to amend House File Number Three. The First Engrossment as amended. The amendment is coded DE-2.
The member from Fillmore, would you like to take the amendment to your amendment? There's an amendment to the amendment, the clerk will report the amendment.
Davids moves to amend his amendment to House File Number Three. The First Engrossment as amended, and the amendment to the amendment is coded A-29.
Representative Davids, to your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. The amendment to the amendment provides full Section 179 expensing starting in tax year 2018. It reduces the charitable gaming net receipts tax by half a percent, and Madam Speaker, I'd ask for roll call.
Representative Davids requests a roll call. Are there 15 hands? Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Davids.
I'd appreciate your support.
On the amendment to the amendment to get the author's amendment in the shape he would like it, is a roll call having been requested? Discussion. I'm not sure if Chair Markwart has had an opportunity to see this and would like to respond. I believe this is related to the tax provisions. Representative Markwart.
Madam Speaker and members, if Representative Davids would yield to a question, please.
He will yield, Representative Markwart.
So, thank you, Madam Speaker, and Representative Davids, I haven't seen, what is the cost for your proposal for the amendment?
Representative Davids.
I don't have the cost figure on that, but I don't believe that's pertinent at this point.
Representative Markwart.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. If this is close to what was done probably other times, we're talking about a substantial increase in cost to the state, and members, and we can talk about this later, but we have a great opportunity right now because the Republican Senate, the DFL House, and the governor are all on board for the first time to include this in final tax agreement to get full Section 179 expensing beginning fiscal year 2020 and beyond, with the realization of the budget that we have to deal with in a fragile economy. So, members, I would ask for a no vote on the Davids amendment.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will take the roll on a Davids amendment to the amendment.
Acem.
Acem no.
Acem no, Albright. Albright aye. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, nay.
Bonner, no. Barr. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, no. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, no.
Bernardi, no. Bierman.
Bierman, no.
Bierman, no. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand votes no.
Brand, no. Cantrell.
Cantrell, no.
Cantrell, no. Carlson A. Carlson A, no. Carlson L.
Carlson L, no.
Carlson L, no. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no. Claflin.
Claflin, no.
Claflin, no. Considine.
Considine, no.
Considine, no. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt. Doubt, aye. David's. David's, aye. Daphne.
Daphne, no.
Daphne, no. Dean.
Dean, no.
Dean, no. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Driskowski.
Driskowski, aye.
Driskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, no.
Eklund, no. Edelson.
Edelson, no.
Edelson, no. Elkins.
Elkins, no.
Elkins, no. Ericson, excused. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, no.
Freiberg, no. Garofalo. Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, no.
Gomez, no. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassl.
Grassl, aye.
Grassl, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, no. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, no.
Hanson, no. Hassan.
Hassan, no.
Hassan, no. Hausmann.
Hausmann, no.
Hausmann, no. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, no.
Herr, no. Hurtas.
Hurtas, aye.
Hurtas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, no.
Hornstein, no. Howard.
Howard, no.
Howard, no. Hewitt.
Hewitt, no.
Hewitt, no. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, no.
Jordan, no. Juergens. Juergens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, no.
Cleavorn, no. Cagle.
Cagle, no.
Cagle, no. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, no.
Katiza Whittoon, no. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podine.
Kunish Podine, no.
Kunish Podine, no. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee. Lee, no. Lesch.
Lesch, no.
Lesch, no. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, no.
Lean, no. Lilly.
Lilly, no.
Lilly, no. Lippert.
Lippert, no.
Lippert, no. Listlegard.
Listlegard, no.
Listlegard, no. Long. Long, no. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, no.
Mahoney, no. Mann.
Mann, no.
Mann, no. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Marquardt.
Marquardt, no.
Marquardt, no. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moller.
Moller, no.
Moller, no. Moran.
Moran, no.
Moran, no. Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison, no. Munson. Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, no.
Murphy, no. Nash.
Nash, aye.
Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, no.
Nelson M, no. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Noor. Noor, no. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson. Olson, no. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, no.
Palowski, no. Purcell.
Purcell, no.
Purcell, no. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Poppy.
Poppy, no.
Poppy, no. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, no.
Pryor, no. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson, no. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, no.
Sandell, no. Sandsted.
Sandsted, no.
Sandsted, no. Sauk.
Sauk, no.
Sauk, no. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, no.
Schultz, no. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson. Stevenson.
Stevenson, no.
Stevenson, no. Sundin.
Sundin, no.
Sundin, no. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, no.
Tabkey, no. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal. Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, no.
Vang, no. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, no.
Wagenius, no. Wozlawick. Wozlawick, no. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, no. Wogomot.
Wogomot, no.
Wogomot, no. Zhang Jie.
Zhang Jie, no.
Zhang Jie, no. Zhang T.
Zhang T, no.
Zhang T, no. Yuakim.
Yuakim, no.
Yuakim, no. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, no.
There being 58 ayes and 75 nays, the amendment to the amendment, the motion does not prevail. The amendment to the amendment is not adopted. Representative David's.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would at this time withdraw the DE2 amendment. Thank you.
Representative David's withdraws the DE2 amendment. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading. House File Number Three, as amended.
Third reading, as amended. Discussion to the bill. The member from Meeker, Representative Erdal.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I've spoken about bonding many times. You know that I think it's important. It stimulates our economy. It provides jobs. It fixes and enhances what the people of Minnesota own. It is something that we as legislators have a responsibility to do. But members, we have to do it right. Let me follow a timeline for you. In early June, I met with Representative Murphy. I was tasked by my caucus to work with her to get a bill that passed the House at $1.1 billion. After four days, we got a pretty good bill done. There was a provision that later each caucus and the governor would add $50 million in discretionary money to use. I helped fashion the bill with that provision in mind. Then the next week, Representative Murphy and Senator Senjam began to meet to reconcile differing bills. I was excluded, as was Senator Pappas. This was a mistake. I believe it's important to include the minorities, to include all four caucuses in these discussions. I appreciate that Representative Murphy did advocate for our minority projects. But when the decision was made to go past $1.1 billion and spend into the $50 million caucus money, I was not in the room. I could not advocate for our position. I was not in the room to promote or to criticize other items. Now, last week, we had many meetings about bonding, and I appreciate Speaker Hartman's openness to our concerns. But then to make matters worse, in going over the back of the bill language, we found items the Senate had not approved, and many opposed. Much of Article 5 apparently was inserted without Senate sign-off. This bill needs more work. We on this side of the aisle want to fulfill our obligation to the people of Minnesota. But please, my suggestion is we don't even vote on this today, that we table it. Let's roll up our sleeves, go back and finish the task that we are close to achieving. We can do this, and we must do this if you want a bonding bill to pass. Again, we are close to a bill that could garner needed support from this side of the aisle. We do need some things, some sort of agreement worked out with the governor. We need some subtractions, some additions and restoration of more of our discretionary money. And we need to do it together in the same room.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Munson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. On the bonding bill, I rise in support of my colleague Representative Erdal's position, which is to vote against the bonding bill. I just wanted to say that, Representative Erdal. It felt good. This is not the way to do it. I would agree with him. Combining a tax bill with a bonding bill is a clear violation of our constitutional requirement for single-subject bills. I do want to thank Chair Murphy for including the Vernon Center project and Waldorf projects in my district. You know, we have a lot of real critical needs in the state. Wastewater infrastructure is something that we can hopefully all agree on that needs to be fixed. We had a hearing on the bill, and the mayor and staff came up to testify on it, where they're dumping 12 million gallons of raw sewage into the Blue Earth River, which goes into the Minnesota River, which comes here to St. Paul. This kind of infrastructure needs to be fixed. But as Representative Erdal was speaking to, where there's $50 million, it's given to each caucus for discretionary funding. This is where the bonding bill process kind of breaks down, where projects that aren't an absolute essential need for the state are added to the bill, and it grows and grows. And I hope we can improve that process. I hope we can someday go with Representative Garofalo's idea with breaking the bonding bill into multiple pieces so that we can stick closer to one single subject in bills. But the 179 portion, the tax portion, is a great bill, and Representative David's amendment was good to have full conformity and to make it clean because we have a lot of farmers that, and small business owners, who had received enormous tax bills in the mail for trading equipment, where normally they wouldn't be paying these huge taxes on it. And we messed up in the legislature, and we need to fix this. So I, too, am voting no on this bill today. I hope we can focus on essential projects, and I hope that we can get the tax bill done, but this wasn't the right process. So thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
The member from Dakota, Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker and members, I'll be voting no on this bill. The bill's not going to pass tonight. That's not news, but I think it's important that we remember and ask ourselves, how did we get here? How did we get to this spot? We are in the 19th week of our governor having emergency powers. 19th week of being able, with the stroke of a pen, to engage in lawmaking unilaterally. Now, on May 2nd, it was announced publicly, everyone knew about it, that this side of the aisle was very concerned about this unilateral power and that we needed to compromise and make changes to the law. Because after all, since COVID-19 has started, the world has changed. Look at how each of us is acting differently in our own individual lives when we're going out to eat, when we're traveling on a bus or train. Look at us in this chamber, how radically different we are behaving at both a member and staff level since the pandemic started. And yet, we are told in this statute of law, in the emergency powers, we can't make a change. We can't make a change. We can't make modifications like Kansas did on a bipartisan basis. We can't involve emergency powers changes which require an affirmative action by the legislature to validate these things that such right-wing states, the state of Washington, have in their laws. Madam Speaker, remember, the world has changed. COVID-19 isn't going anywhere. I appreciate the fact that some folks want to tell you that we're going to have a vaccine at the end of the year, early next year. I don't think we are. And I appreciate that some people would have you believe that through herd immunity, that somehow we're going to be able to get enough people infected, have them recover, that everything's going to be fine. It looks like the latest data is that this is going to be more like the common cold, where you're going to get it, you're going to recover, and you're going to be susceptible to it in a couple of months. COVID-19's not going anywhere, folks. And this requires a change in our emergency power statutes. Otherwise, we are going to be in a place where Governor Walz is going to have emergency authority until January of 2023. That's unacceptable. It's just not an option. So again, the contents of this tax bill, the contents of this bonding bill, I appreciate the conversations and the substance of it. People have known for a long time that many of us are concerned about this, and we need to compromise and have these concerns addressed. Now, that's the substance of it, but let me now take a step back and talk a little bit procedurally about something that just genuinely confuses me. As I mentioned, Leader Doubt on May 2nd made this announcement. It wasn't a surprise. The response of the other three legislative caucuses was to do the following. Number one, say that in order for the bonding bill to pass, the tax bill had to pass. And then the response to that from another caucus was, well, in order for the tax bill to pass, the supplemental spending bill had to pass. So what the caucuses have done is you have maneuvered yourself into a corner where what our caucus feels about emergency powers and how our opinions are on emergency powers tie everything together. You have taken actions that have enhanced our ability to shape legislation. So it should come as no surprise that we're going to stand here tonight, that the bonding bill is going to go down, tax bill attached to it or not, it was going to be the same way, when there is a clear avenue out of here for us. And that avenue is a reasonable, pragmatic, and sensible compromise on emergency powers. When the emergency powers were created, they were never intended. No one had visualized something like this. After all, we haven't had a pandemic in modern times to this degree, with world travel, lockdowns. This has never happened before. So of course, we have to modify this statute. And members, I would implore you, changes in the emergency power statutes are in no way a reflection of weakness by Governor Walz. way a reflection of weakness by Governor Walz. It's not an acknowledgement of any failures. It's a recognition that the facts in the state of Minnesota, in the world, that the world we live in today is substantially different than it was in early March when this began in Minnesota. Okay? Changing law and responding to current events and facts, that's a good thing. It's not a bad thing. It's a sign of leadership. It's not a sign of weakness. And it's a sign of strength, not hiding in a corner. So, Madam Speaker, members, we're going to take that this bill's going to go down today. You know, hopefully we get another shot at doing this stuff. But I would just encourage members on both sides of the aisle, if you have ideas about how we can compromise on these matters, Representative Dowd has laid out a proposal that sounds pretty darn reasonable to me. If you have a concern about it, express those. If you have language to correct it, please do it. But at the end of the day, we cannot have a pre-COVID-19 mindset in July of 2020. Just doesn't work. So please, work with us. Please compromise. Let's not adopt the bad habits that people learned in Washington, D.C. Let's work together and make Minnesota a better place. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I'll be brief. You know, a bonding bill is a curious thing because the majority party has to get votes from the minority party unless they are in possession of a supermajority. In the six years that I have been here, no one has had a supermajority. So you have to go and include the other side of the aisle to get a bonding bill passed. And I found it curious that in the waning days of, I guess, the first special session, that Representative Erdal was walking around kind of lonely, not doing much of anything because he'd been excluded. And that exclusion means that he's got no view into the bill. We have no way to have him advocate for our things. And I'll tell you, the funny part of it is, is that you exclude our lead in the negotiations and then you bring a bill to the floor and you expect us to put up votes for it? That's amazing. That is absolutely an amazingly bananas concept that you would think that we would put up a vote for something that we had no voice in. And I understand that you'll say, well, here's a pittance of cash. Well, I guess millions of dollars is a pittance, but you even played with the amount that you were going to offer to the Republican caucus. You know, Representative Erdal might be the most passionate guy, at least on our side, if not the legislature, on bonding. And yet, you didn't see fit to include him in the conversation, which I find mind-boggling at best and disrespectful. So, yeah, as Representative Garofalo said, this bill's going down. And it isn't because we don't want projects around the state. It isn't because House Republicans don't view the bonding bill as an important tool to take care of the things that we own, the things that the state has to maintain. That's not it at all. That's not the message. And I've had a number of people call me over the last several days saying, well, you know, we need this. Well, guess what? We get that. We understand that and we agree. If you put projects in there that are infrastructure that the state owns that are in need of maintenance and include us, not just pat us on the head like we're some kid at the Thanksgiving child's table, you know what? We'll work with you. But when we don't even get a seat at the kid's table at Thanksgiving dinner, guess what? It's not going to go so well for you. So I'm voting no. And I hope every Republican, and I hope a couple of Democrats do as well, because you don't like the way this whole thing has gone down. It is disrespectful. And I have not seen this oysted on the DFL when we were in the majority. This was not something that I saw coming. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
The member from Clay, Representative Markort.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and members. And there's a number of tax provisions in the bill, but I really want to concentrate on one, and that is the full conformity of Section 179 expensing that is in this bill. And we all know that Section 179 has been a big priority for many years. And there's been a lot of work, my business group, farm groups, legislators, members on the Tax Committee over the years, including this year, have heard very passionate testimony from farmers who have pleaded with us to get this done, to get the full conformity for Section 179. And this year, we had to also solve something that Representative Munson mentioned earlier tonight, unlike-kind exchanges where trade-in values were now recognized. That was big for 2018 and 2019, where people, small businesses and farmers, got some pretty big bills. This bill fixes that. It fixes that. Because what it does, it provides full conformity of Section 179 for all like-kind exchanges going back retroactively to 2018 and 2019. So now, farmers and small businesses with the like-kind exchange will get the same type of treatment as they do under the federal government right now, under the federal tax code. And then moving forward, tax year 2020, and moving forward, there is full conformity of Section 179 for everything. So this is greatly going to benefit small businesses and farmers in these really tough economic times. And we can solve that tonight with a yes vote. I've heard from many members in committee and throughout how Section 179, it's a top priority and it's doable. How many times have we seen this get close to the goal line and not be able to push this across? And we know, in this divided legislature, the only divided legislature in the nation, that we have an agreement. Senate Republicans are on board. House DFLers are on board. The governor is on board. This is the first time that I can ever remember, I think it's the first time ever, that the Senate, the House, and the governor all agree on Section 179 full conformity as part of the final tax agreement. This is the first time. And so if we pass the bill tonight, the Senate's going to pass the bill tonight, Section 179's going to become law with the expected governor's signature. This is the real deal. And it all started, if we remember, in the mini-session in Wynona when this issue first got brought up. Our first bill we heard in Tax Committee this year dealt with Section 179 and dealing with the like-kind exchange problem. This has been a focus all year long, and we have a bipartisan agreement with the governor. And we know that the governor now is going to have to call us back in August, but there are no guarantees, there are no guarantees that we can get to this point of agreement again on Section 179 full conformity. We may not get another chance. And so, members, this is our opportunity, July 21st now, 2020, to finally pass full conformity to Section 179 expensing and make this the law in Minnesota. Make that the law. Let's help our small businesses. Let's help our farmers. Everyone who's in the know on this, know that this is the real deal. This, if we vote for it tonight, we can get this done and it becomes law. It's guaranteed. So, members, let's get this done tonight. We can finally pass Section 179. People around this state are expecting bipartisan agreements. They're expecting bipartisan work, and that's what we're providing tonight, an agreement between Democrats and Republicans. And people around the state, they expect us to do this, and people expect the benefits and deserve the benefits from this bill. So, members, please vote yes. Let's provide some real economic relief. Let's provide tax cuts for farmers and small businesses around the state. And the tax portions include other things, of course, the gaming receipt reductions that will help our VFWs, our American Leagues, our Lions Club, help cut taxes and provide more dollars out to its charities. So there's a number of great things in that portion of the bill. And, members, ask for your support on House File 3 tonight.
The member from St. Louis, the author of the bill, Representative Murphy.
Madam Speaker, thank you, members, and whoever's still watching. House File 3 as amended is a document that recommends, and the spreadsheet that goes with House File 3, is a document that recognizes underfunding and promises made in past bonding bills. It addresses the needs and emergencies of today. It shows, there are some, it shows Minnesotans that some responsible members of government are listening to them and want to reach out and help them through investments in the clean water, good climate, roads and bridges that connect the neighborhoods and the towns and cities and regions of the state, and bring Minnesotans together into one Minnesota for a better future. If we vote tonight to invest this money that is proposed in House File 3, we will be building a better future for all Minnesotans. Please vote yes.
The member from Isanti, the minority leader, Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. You know, this is probably a shorter debate than we'd usually have on a bonding bill. But I think unfortunately, everybody knows what's happening here tonight. This isn't a bill that was ever intended to pass. This is what we call in St. Paul a dog and pony show. And I'll walk you through some history to demonstrate exactly what I'm talking about. If you remember back to 2016, there was a bonding bill last night of session. We passed it out of the House. At that time, the Capitol was under construction. The Senate was meeting across the street. We sent the bill over to the Senate. We had an agreement on the bill. We sent it over to the Senate. The Senate added a handwritten amendment to add some language that would pave the way for a light rail project to happen. In the legislature, we call that a poison pill. And then they did this at like four minutes to midnight and attempted to send the bill back across the street. In a weird twist of fate, because they were across the street, the person who was bringing the bill over literally had to run across the light rail tracks and probably could have been killed by a light rail. And while that person wasn't killed by the light rail, we adjourned, the bill wasn't going to make it here by midnight, we adjourned, signed, and died, and went home. And like I said, while that person wasn't killed by light rail, that bill was killed by light rail. There's no chance that you can stick a poison pill like that in a bill and tell anybody outside this building honestly that you tried to pass a bill. This bill has a poison pill in it that clears the way for the Botino Light Rail Project. It's a poison pill. A bonding bill's never going to pass this chamber with Republican votes with that poison pill in it, period. And by the way, if you want to say that you have an agreement with the Senate on the bill, you do not. They're not going to pass it with that poison pill in it, period. So for everybody watching at home, and I think everybody statewide has figured this out, if you haven't, this is what a dog and pony show looks like. This vote's not going to pass, this bill's not going to pass tonight. It wasn't intended to pass. It was intended to bring it up and, see, they don't support your project. You know, this is a bill that's designed to set up somebody for an election. But this isn't a bill that represents, did you come here to do your job? Because you didn't. And I remember a long time ago, in negotiations, somebody told me, you know, if you want people to care about what you care about, you need to care about what they care about. And since the beginning of the negotiations, this session, I have said I care about two things. And I probably can't articulate it better than Representative Garofalo did. But I said I care about the governor's emergency powers. And I want to remind you that four-plus, almost five months ago, the governor put in place emergency powers. I'm not going to get out my statute book and read to you the definition of emergency under Chapter 12. I did it the last time I spoke. But if I read it to you, there's nothing in that definition that describes the situation we're in now. What happened four, almost five months ago, is the governor started issuing executive orders under his emergency powers that have the full force and effect of law. And they are still in effect. And you don't care. Our governor is legislating. That's what he's doing. His executive orders have the full force and effect of law. He is legislating. Our Constitution doesn't permit that, but he is doing it. And you don't care. Yet, when I talk to you, you know, one-on-one in meetings and I say, hey, this is my idea. This is what I think we can do, which would end the logjam. Yeah, we agree with that. We think that's the right thing. But nobody will say that, right? We won't cross our governor. So we've signed away the power that the legislature has to just let the governor legislate, and you don't care. That's the one thing I brought up. The second thing I brought up was deficit spending. We have a $2.5 billion deficit right now. This bill increases our deficit by $100 million. Nobody cares. And on top of that, you plan to spend another $58 million in a supplemental budget bill. Actually, this one's more than, this one's over $200 million. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me. This one's over $200. I forget that it includes the tax bill. This one's over $200 million. And another $58 million in a supplemental spending bill that was supposed to pass as part of somebody's agreement at some point in time. So we're going to increase the deficit by 10%. And nobody can find a $250 million savings in our state budget of $50-plus billion. And Minnesota families and Minnesota businesses have had to find savings in their budgets to make ends meet during COVID, but not us. So the two things that I have cared about and my caucus cares about, you all haven't cared about. And do we want a bonding bill to pass? We absolutely do. And we look forward to you doing exactly what you said we were going to do, because the four leaders met the last time we were here in special session, and we decided that the four caucuses together were going to write the bonding bill and decide what was going to be in it. And we proceeded down that path. Representative Erdal, thank you for your work. There's probably nobody here more passionate and more knowledgeable about bonding than you, and you've done an excellent job representing our caucus and the projects bipartisantly of this chamber. But you said you were going to vote, you said that you were going to negotiate this bill, all four caucuses together, because it takes votes from all four caucuses. And it was approximately a week after you had cut us out of the negotiations and you were about a week into negotiations with the Senate, before we realized you were having conversations behind our back. And I heard about it from lobbyists. They said, oh, do you know this is in the bonding bill or that's in the bonding bill? And I said, no, that hasn't been negotiated yet. We haven't even started that. And they said, oh, yeah. The Senate and the House are negotiating a bonding bill. So you tell us the way it's going to work. We agree on things. You change it and you can't even tell us? What you cannot do when you leave here tonight is say that you tried to pass a bonding bill because you didn't. A bonding bill is not going to pass this chamber with that Botino language. I could go through this bill line by line. I could go through this bill line by line and tell you the stuff that's in here that just, sorry, isn't going to pass. And by the way, this bill is not agreed to with the Senate, because they're not agreeing to a lot of this stuff either. So if you want to roll up your sleeves, I know 2020 has been goofy. To me, 2020 has been like the movie Groundhog Day. Because every 30 days, we wake up and we have another special session. So while we aren't going to get a bonding bill done this session, unfortunately, because you didn't try, we'll be back here in three weeks. And hopefully, we can try again then. And hopefully, next time, when you want our votes, you'll actually include us in the negotiations, just like you told us you were going to do. And when you don't do what you said you were going to do, your word doesn't mean a lot around here. And for those people who called me on the phone this morning and listened to my press conference out here this morning, there wasn't a conversation at the Capitol about bonding today. Governor wasn't engaged. Majority in the House wasn't engaged. Not a single conversation. Dean Erdahl didn't talk to anybody about bonding today. Nobody even tried. Don't let him tell you anything to the contrary when they try to blame somebody for their own failings in not getting a bill here to the floor that can pass. So I look forward to when we can pass a bonding bill out of this chamber and invest in the projects that are important to Minnesotans. Unfortunately, that day isn't today. And everybody inside this building and everybody outside this building understands that that's the case. So while we close out this dog and pony show with one final speech, next time, I hope that the majority party can do a better job of being inclusive, including people in the negotiations that they actually said they were going to negotiate with. And we together can come up with the priorities of this state and the priorities of this chamber to make sure that the people who we represent at home, that their voices are heard here at the Capitol. And those are the things that we care about. And if you want to be successful, I'd think about making those the things you care about too. I don't even need to ask people to vote no, because I think people already know how they're voting on this bill.
The member from Hennepin, the majority leader, Representative Winkler.
Thank, excuse me, thank you, Madam Speaker. I hope that Representative Douth and Garofalo are wrong about the vote here tonight, though I suspect they are probably right. I think they probably have the support of the people in their caucus who think that somehow defeating yet another bonding bill, just like they did in 2016 and 2019 and earlier in 2020, are the way to make a difference and improve the lives of people in this state. But really, what this is, is a stick-up. This is your money or your life. This is your job or your family's health. Either give in and let a bunch of anti-vaxxers, COVID deniers, conspiracy theorists run Minnesota's healthcare, or you can't have a job, Spill. That's all this is. And this chamber has been working to find some reasonable compromise for a long time. The governor has been engaged and has had meetings directly with Representative Douth, looking for a compromise. The Speaker and I have had meetings directly looking for a compromise. We've talked about possibilities. And the only thing that we have heard is hand over Minnesota's healthcare to us. Trust us, we care too. There's no evidence of that in the debates we've had this year. There's no evidence of that in the positions taken by your party. There is no evidence of that coming from the leadership at the White House and on down. Denying COVID will not help you win this election. Denying COVID will not help you pass a bonding bill. Denying COVID will not help you get your bills passed in any shape or form. And they will not help create jobs for Minnesotans now or in the future. And if you want to make a bargain that nobody wins, take the Douth bargain. If you actually want to pass a bill that will make a difference and not have you be an accomplice to a mugging, vote yes tonight.
There being no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright. Albright, no. Anderson.
Anderson, no.
Anderson, no. Becker.
Becker, no.
Becker, no. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, no.
Baker, no. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, no.
Bennett, no. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo.
Bo, no.
Bo, no. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson, a.
Carlson, a, aye.
Carlson, a, aye. Carlson, L.
Carlson, L, aye.
Carlson, L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, yes.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, no.
Daniels, no. Douth. Douth, no. Davids. Davids, no. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, no. Detmer.
Detmer, no.
Detmer, no. Druskowski.
Druskowski, no.
Druskowski, no. Ekland.
Ekland, aye.
Ekland, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericsson, excused. Fabian.
Fabian, no.
Fabian, no. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, no.
Franzen, no. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo, no. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, no.
Green, no. Gressel.
Gressel, no.
Gressel, no. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, no.
Grunhagen, no. Gunther.
Gunther, no.
Gunther, no. Haley.
Haley, no.
Haley, no. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, no.
Hamilton, no. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, no.
Heinrich, no. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, no.
Heinzmann, no. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, no.
Hertas, no. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson, no. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens. Jurgens, no. Keel.
Keel, no.
Keel, no. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Waton.
Katiza Waton, aye.
Katiza Waton, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, no.
Koznick, no. Kresha.
Kresha, no.
Kresha, no. Kunis Poudine.
Kunis Poudine, aye.
Kunis Poudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, no.
Lehman, no. Lee. Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listegard. Listegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, emphatic, no.
Lucero, no. Luick.
Luick, no.
Luick, no. Mahoney.
Aye. Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, no.
McDonald, no. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no. Miller.
Miller, no.
Miller, no. Mohler.
Mohler, aye.
Mohler, aye. Moran. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson. Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash.
Nash, no.
Nash, no. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, no.
Nelson N, no. New. New, no. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, no.
Nornis, no. Navatni.
Navatni, no.
Navatni, no. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, no.
O'Driscoll, no. Olson. Olson, aye. O'Neill. O'Neill. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, no.
Petersburg, no. Pearson.
Pearson, no.
Pearson, no. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, no.
Poston, no. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, no.
Quam, no. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robins. Robins, no. Runbeck.
Runbeck, no.
Runbeck, no. Sandell.
Sandell, yes.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, no.
Schumacher, no. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, no.
Scott, no. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundin.
Sundin, aye.
Sundin, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, no.
Swazinski, no. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, no.
Tice, no. Torkelson.
Torkelson, no.
Torkelson, no. Erdahl. Erdahl, no. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, no.
Vogel, no. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, no.
West, no. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgamot.
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Jong J.
Jong J, aye.
Jong J, aye. Jong T.
Jong T, aye.
Jong T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. O'Neill. O'Neill.
There being 75 ayes and 57 nays, the bill does not pass, having not received the required number of votes. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, usually the clerk reports the motion to suspend the rules to take up for immediate consideration and passage. But we're going to move to suspend the rules to take that bill up. It's Senate File Four, the driver's license bill.
Representative Douth.
I'd encourage members to support the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion prevails. The rules are suspended. To take up Senate File Four for immediate consideration. The member from Anoka, Representative Bernardi. Please explain Senate File Four while we wait for the bill to come before us.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill before us is the Driver's License Exam Backlog Relief Bill. It is a bill that we've been able to get bipartisan support from both the House and the Senate. The bill is aimed at providing additional tools to the Department of Public Safety's Driver and Vehicle Services Division in order to help them clear the current backlog of Class D and CDL road tests, as well as provide knowledge tests in a more timely and efficient manner moving forward. It contains provisions codifying the prohibition on standing Class D road skill test appointments for driving schools, allowing excess funds from the Vehicle Title and Registration System account to be used to implement online knowledge testing at driver's education programs or other authorized entities, and requiring legislative reports on both the backlog issue and new online testing provisions. That is the summary of the bill, and I encourage your support.
The member from Brown, Representative Torkelson. Did you want to speak to this bill before we find it?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I would.
Representative Torkelson, I believe it's been referred to the Transportation Committee, so we have to go retrieve it from the Transportation Committee and physically bring it to the chamber. Representative Torkelson.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. I will just speak briefly to the bill. It's one I would encourage members to vote for. It will help the department relieve some of the backlog. And I hope the department will consider also offering tests, behind-the-wheel tests, all over the state. Right now, many constituents, citizens of the state of Minnesota have to drive hours to take a behind-the-wheel test. We need to offer those services more broadly across the state. And I'm hoping that this action of this bill will help the department take that action. And members, I urge you to vote green on the bill once take that action. And, members, I urge you to vote green on the bill once we get a chance to vote on it. Thank you.
So to clarify, Representative Winkler moved to recall the bill from committee, and everybody voted yes. Now we're going to vote to suspend the rules to take up Senate File Four for immediate consideration. Clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article Four, Section Nineteen of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule there be suspended and an urgency be declared so that Senate File Number Four be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Members, this is an automatic roll call. The clerk will take the roll on the motion to suspend.
Acem?
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright? Albright, aye. Anderson?
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker?
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner?
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr?
Aye. Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker?
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn? Becker Finn, aye. Bennett?
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi?
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman?
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo?
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand?
Brand, yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell?
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen?
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin?
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine?
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels?
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Douth? Douth, aye. Davids? Davids, aye. Daphne?
Daphne, aye.
Daphne, aye. Dean?
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth? Damuth, aye. Detmer?
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski?
Druskowski, aye.
Druskowski, aye. Eklund?
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson?
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins?
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericsson? Excused. Fabian?
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher?
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen?
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg?
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo? Garofalo, aye. Gomez?
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green?
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel?
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen?
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther?
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley?
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson? Halverson, aye. Hamilton?
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson?
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan?
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann?
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich?
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann?
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr?
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertos?
Hertos, aye.
Hertos, aye. Hornstein?
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard?
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt?
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson? Johnson, aye. Jordan?
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Juergens? Juergens, aye. Keel?
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn?
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Kegel?
Kegel, aye.
Kegel, aye. Katiza Whittoon?
Katiza Whittoon, aye.
Katiza Whittoon, aye. Koznick?
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha?
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podine?
Kunish Podine, aye.
Kunish Podine, aye. Lehman?
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee? Lee, aye. Lesh?
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling?
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean?
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly?
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert?
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard? Listlegard, aye. Long? Long, aye. Lucero?
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Lewick?
Lewick, aye.
Lewick, aye. Mahoney?
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann?
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani?
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart?
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason?
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald?
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen?
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller?
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mohler?
Mohler, aye.
Mohler, aye. Moran?
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison?
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson? Munson, aye. Murphy?
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash?
Nash, aye.
Nash, aye. Nelson M.?
Nelson M., aye.
Nelson M., aye. Nelson N.?
Nelson N., aye.
Nelson N., aye. New? New, aye. Nor? Nor, aye. Nornis?
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni?
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll?
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson? Olson, aye. O'Neal?
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski?
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell?
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg?
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson?
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto?
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy?
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston?
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor?
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam?
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson?
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robins? Robins, aye. Runback?
Runback, aye.
Runback, aye. Sandell?
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted?
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk?
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher?
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz?
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott?
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson?
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine?
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski?
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey?
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice?
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson?
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal? Erdal, aye. Vang?
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel?
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius?
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick?
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West?
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler? Winkler? Winkler, aye. Walgamot?
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Jong J.
Jong J, aye.
Jong J, aye. Jong T.
Jong T, aye.
Jong T, aye. Yuakim?
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman? Speaker Hartman, aye.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number Four.
Second reading. There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number Four.
Third reading. Hearing no discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill.
Acem?
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright? Albright, aye. Anderson?
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker?
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner?
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr?
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker?
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn? Becker Finn, aye. Bennett?
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi?
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman?
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo?
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand?
Brand, aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell?
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen?
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin?
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine?
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels?
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Douth? Douth, aye. Davids? Davids, aye. Daphne? Daphne? Dean?
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth? Damuth, aye. Detmer?
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Druskowski?
Druskowski, aye.
Druskowski, aye. Eklund?
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson?
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins?
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericsson? Excused. Fabian?
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher?
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen? Franzen?
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg?
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo? Garofalo, aye. Gomez?
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green?
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel?
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen?
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther?
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley?
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson? Halverson, aye. Hamilton?
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson?
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan? Hassan? Hausmann?
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich?
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann?
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr?
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertos?
Hertos, aye.
Hertos, aye. Hornstein?
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard?
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt?
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson? Johnson, aye. Jordan?
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Juergens? Juergens, aye. Keel?
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn?
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Kegel?
Kegel, aye.
Kegel, aye. Katiza Whittoon?
Katiza Whittoon, aye.
Katiza Whittoon, aye. Koznick?
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha?
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podine?
Kunish Podine, aye.
Kunish Podine, aye. Lehman?
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee? Lee, aye. Lesh?
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling?
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean?
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly? Lilly? Lippert?
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard? Listlegard, aye. Long? Long, aye. Lucero?
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Lewick?
Lewick, aye.
Lewick, aye. Mahoney?
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann?
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani?
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart?
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason?
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald?
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen?
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller?
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mohler?
Mohler, aye.
Mohler, aye. Moran?
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison?
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson? Munson, aye. Murphy?
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash?
Nash, aye.
Nash, aye. Nelson M.?
Nelson M., aye.
Nelson M., aye. Nelson N.?
Nelson N., aye.
Nelson N., aye. New? New, aye. Nor? Nor, aye. Nornis?
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni?
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll?
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson? Olson, aye. O'Neal?
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski?
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell?
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg?
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson?
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto?
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy?
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston?
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor?
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam?
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson?
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robins? Robins, aye. Runback?
Runback, aye.
Runback, aye. Sandell?
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted?
Sandsted, aye.